Thanks. This is the planning board meeting of May 18, 2021. And welcome, public. Welcome our guest Joyce Hastings and welcome everybody. We're waiting on two planning board members, but we expect them to show up shortly.
Will just came on.
Oh, great. Okay. And I know Addie will be coming soon. So let's just quickly run through the agenda. First, are there any items not on the agenda that any member of the board would like to add to the agenda? Hearing none. We will be, we're not going to begin with minutes. We'll skip that one for this time. Here's Addie May. Addie May, we just got started. We're just getting started. You didn't miss anything. We have two hearings, one at 7:30, one at 7:45. It is now 7:07, so we have a few things we can get done beforehand. Current planning board business, we have an A and R application for Two Whitney Drive. We have a quick review of what happened at town meeting. And then an update on ongoing and potential development projects. Coolidge Crossing, the Lebaski Projects, the Pines and Apple Hill. And oh, the third is focusing specifically on the stormwater issues on the last two 40Bs. Other business, citizen comments, things not on the agenda, reports on meetings with other boards, and the town planner report. Okay, no changes to the minutes. There are none, so let's go ahead. Our first hearing is at 7:30, so I suggest that we go straight to the first item of planning board business, which is the A and R on Two Whitney Drive. And this will let Joyce do her job and then go on and have an evening.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Joyce, would you like to begin by showing us the plan?
Sure. So this is a plan that you originally endorsed on June 18, 2019. And then the, somehow the original got mislaid. And so we are, it's the exact same plan with a revised date. Would you like to see the plan you signed or the plan? They're both the same. So why don't I show you the one you've signed, just so you can see?
Yeah, just to renew our memory, remind us what it was about and why we approved it. And you may share your screen, I think. Yes.
So this is, if I can get it, can you see my screen?
Yep.
So this is a plan, when I, if I turn it.
Yeah, if you rotated it.
Rotated it might help you.
So now that's Whitney Street on the right.
So this is Whitney Street. This is Whitney Drive. Western Ave is down here. And so what we had done is taken this large parcel here and created 2.23 acre parcel with the existing house. And then this parcel here will get conveyed to other property that the same owner owns on Whitney Drive. So the owner of both properties, 20 Whitney Drive and Two Whitney Street, same person, she's just taking and she had cut off of this piece of property to go with her, the house she actually lives in, and she was proposing to sell this house with that parcel. So you endorsed it in 2019. I don't think she was really clear that she needed to record the Mylar or save it in a well-protected spot. So at some point it got mislaid and so we're just, I have changed, revised the date on the plan, filed a new application and a new filing fee and are just looking to have it reendorsed.
Okay, that's fairly simple. I didn't quite see where her property on Whitney Drive is.
It's this lot right here.
Oh, right. Okay, that makes sense. And I assume, oh, excuse me.
She's owned both for quite a while and she's always intended to include, because this is where she lives, so she wanted to have it with her own property.
That makes sense. And Gino, could you remind me, is this width 50 feet or more? The width of the long strip between the front and the back?
No, it's not 50 feet. So it's a non, it's a non-conforming, well, actually, no, no, I think, isn't our rule 50 feet until you get to the house?
Right.
So that's beyond the house.
Oh, so that could be as narrow as you want it to be?
Yes.
All right, okay.
And it's an existing, that's not changing from this plan.
Right, so we're not going to dispute that. I was just curious.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Okay, are there any comments on this plan from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? I hear none again, so apparently we will need to re-sign this new Mylar. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we will first just take a vote. Do we have a motion?
I move to endorse the A and R for Two Whitney Drive.
Wait a second.
Second, sorry.
Thank you, Addie. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Addie May?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Is that for Will?
No, I don't think so.
Sorry, my, my screen froze for a second. Did I, did I miss you? Did you miss me?
Oh, yes, so we're taking a vote on this redoing.
I heard you say that, that much and then it dropped, so.
Oh, okay. Well, so we got through three of the five planning board members with three yes votes. How do you vote, Will?
I'll say yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so it passes. Thank you, everybody, and thank you.
One more question. So the, the closing for the house at Two Whitney Street is coming up fairly soon. And I realize that we're still in COVID situation where it's, I'm not sure how you go about signing things. Is there anything that I can do to facilitate that? Can I bring the plan around to you all? Is there somewhere, is there some way that I can help? Help get the, the plan signed as soon as possible?
I was gonna offer up maybe if everyone wanted to come to DPW, because it can just sit on the main conference room in DPW and there's almost always someone there and you guys can get in to sign it there.
Oh, that's a good thing, because it's not locked.
Yeah.
So we don't have to make an appointment to get into town hall. That's a good suggestion, Addie May. That, that would be great.
Can I, can I go, can I bring it over there? Because I know Gino's on vacation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not there first thing tomorrow morning, but I'm there in the afternoon and the rest of the week. But Joyce, if you're, if you bring it in at the side door and gave it to one of the guys, they understand, you know, to leave it on the conference room table, that would be okay, too.
All right, and I'll make sure there's a couple of proper pens for endorsement.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
If it's, if it's signed by Friday, is that okay, or do you need it signed sooner than that?
No, no, if it were signed by Friday, I would be dancing in the street. So anything you could do would be, would we be very pleased.
Okay, I, let me take a poll of the planning board. Can everyone sign it?
Actually, Joyce, can I give you my cell? Just, my cell is 617-921-4236. And anyone else, if there's any trouble at all getting into signing it or whatever, just feel free to text her or call me.
Perfect. I will, I will bring them over with pens and have them on the conference room table.
Oh, great, Joyce. If you could bring them over tomorrow, then we'll all get in there before Friday.
I will do that. Thank you so much for your help.
Joyce, could you bring one paper copy?
Yes.
And then when you, when you take the Mylar back, if you could make two or three, two or three prints from that?
Yes, with the signatures on it.
Yeah.
I will do that. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, thanks, Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, good. The next thing on our agenda is another planning board business. We have time before our first hearing at 7:30. I'm gonna move you all over, all your little faces over. See what is next. Sorry. Okay. Oh, I can't move the agenda, Gino. I think, oh, it's on my, okay. I thought you were sharing your screen. It's my screen I'm looking at. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is let's have a, a report on the zoning articles at town meeting. They're on the Sherburne website today under the town clerk. Are there any comments that the board wants to make?
Well done.
Yes, Marion, as always, your presentation was clear, concise, and well done.
Oh, thank you very much. And Gino, the same. I mean, you know, I guess we're sort of sitting here kind of wondering what to say, because we're not used to such unanimous votes. We're used to going to battle over something or other. So anyway, that's good. And I thought town meeting went very well. Addie May, the setup was good at DPW. It seemed to go really smoothly. The important thing to note is that there were 530 people. It set a town meeting record
Wow.
at the DPW. It didn't look like that many, but a lot of people were bunched up.
And the vote tally came that, that high, huh?
Yep.
Wow. Amazing. Yeah. I sat over, I sat, I sat over on the east tent, my usual spot.
East tent. Oh, yes, I know where you were. Okay, we can begin to talk about the ongoing, the updates on ongoing development projects. We still have some time. The first on the list is Coolidge Crossing. Some of you may have been at the last zoning board meeting on Coolidge Crossing. I know Gino was there. Who else was there?
I was there.
I was there.
Yeah.
Okay, Addie May, do you want to lead off? I have some notes on, if you want me to lead off and then we'll see who else can add something.
Why don't you start, Marion, because I know you'll be more chronological. I might be all over the place.
Well, I'm looking at my notes, which I took kind of in chronological order. They went through the waivers. And this incidentally was the second to last meeting on Coolidge Crossing. At the next CBA meeting, they intend to close the hearing. So this was close to the last opportunity for anyone to make comments. I believe it was, it's one more, Gino.
No, they did close it. They did close it.
Yeah, so I get it wrong where to start. They did close it.
They did close it, but I think why, why you may be a little confused is they set the next meeting for June 2 to begin deliberations.
That's right. Exactly. So we can listen in to that, but we can't make comments or throw in our two cents. But between now and June 2, we could still, no, we can't even submit things, can we? It's done. Okay. But there were some interesting things that came up. They did get a waiver on the parking, but it was a good waiver. They're making the parking spaces a little shorter, 18 feet long instead of 30 feet long, which is the standard. They got a waiver on building height, because they're taller than what we have in our bylaws. The Meadowbrook Road residents had various concerns that they aired. One was the potential need for water and sewer connections. And it was explained that, of course, the ZBA or the select board is making municipal agreements with Natick and Framingham, so there will be no new water taken out or put in to the neighborhood. So that's not likely to trigger a new water and sewer connection. However, the residents rightly poiled, pointed out that the Pulte EA development is going to require blasting. And if it turns out that the blasting creates new well and water contamination problems on Meadowbrook, that they want to have some, something in place for a for a fix. Basically, they first asked that they wanted the water lines on Meadowbrook pre-installed and pre-funded by someone else all down Meadowbrook, and that clearly was not going to happen. But finally, they did scale back their request to just have a tap inserted in the main going down Coolidge Street, so that if in the future they do have to install town water on Meadowbrook, they have a tap that'll be closed, of course, at first. They have a tap on the main line. And that made sense. Various people pointed out that the tap is a very expensive component of a new side system. And apparently the, I forget who it was that agreed to that, but it was agreed that they would install a tap while putting in the water lines. So I guess that's just sort of like a closed tap on the side.
Yes, I think the issue was that once it's an active water line and Sean can jump in if he needs. So once it's an active water line, it's much more difficult to install that tap. While it's being constructed and it's not pressurized, it's, it's a much easier install.
Yeah, that's good. That's exactly right. They also asked again about a sidewalk down Coolidge. And at least the Baystone people are just, aren't even considering that at all. No way. And the ZBA said they can't request off-site improvements. So that's the end of that for now.
Yeah, I guess in that part of the conversation, I know it was somewhat frustrating, but when we still, like, the Pulte side, the EA side, will have to come before planning board. And at that point, you know, they kept saying, well, to do a sidewalk involves takings, involves, there were a lot of concerns and expense, but maybe that when they do come before, maybe not asking to do the whole thing, but maybe they do the sidewalk in front of their own two properties or in front of their property. Of course, then Baystone will be separate, but if at least Pulte had something in front of theirs as a starting point and then, you know, depending on where we're at as a town and a community and what else is going on, part of the conversation might be some towards further sidewalk. And bit by bit, planning board could maybe work on it, like, we're doing, we've done with the Main Street sidewalk.
And even if it's a, a nice stone dust trail off the road in the, in the woods, that would be much better than nothing.
Yeah.
And actually, that, that, you know, I see that all the time, and I think that is actually kind of doable. But in any case, we need to pursue that when we, when Pulte comes around. And, Gino, go ahead, John.
Yeah, just to make a comment, that the, the original developer trust had agreed to put in unimproved dirt trail, basically. And we referenced a trail guide standard. So it wasn't going to be even stone dust, but certainly wasn't a sidewalk. So so just to keep that in mind, that was the original agreement. And the town had to provide all the takings and all the permitting necessary. So that's, their agreement was to, I think in the verbal discussion, it was to run a bobcat down. So, but, but the, the agreement was to put in a trail.
Right. So we will follow up on that, definitely. Gino, just to clarify one thing, at the very back of Coolidge Crossing, that, that is Pulte land before you actually connect to Peters Hill. Is that right? So I'm concerned about the, the trail back there, which is more like a Jeep road, actually.
Right, that's part of the open space that would go with the EA development.
Right. So we'll be taking that up again. Okay. Addie May, do you have anything more to add to that?
No, I mean, I think you covered it. I mean, as usual, some, some of the butters were, you know, acted surprised and upset and said, you know, they hadn't had any chance to say anything and didn't realize this was happening. But I guess that's, will always happen. I mean, you do the best you can to get information out there.
Yeah, there were some butters on Meadowbrook that have been coming to these meetings all along. So it's not as if it was hard to find. Okay, so we're two minutes away from 7:30. I, I'm reluctant to start on something new, but I might mention something. It's, it's related to Coolidge Crossing. I was back up there on Peters Hill, kind of looking at connections to Rockwood Street. And, you know, hiked up from Rockwood. I've usually hiked up from Coolidge, but this time I went from Rockwood. And it's not terribly steep. I was looking for, you know, how easy that route is from Rockwood over to those developments. So I got to the point where it, you're off of town land. At this point, you're under the power lines. And then going on to the, the open space portion of the Pulte development. And when I was up there, I gave Gino a call, because it was such a mess up there. I, I know we took a sidewalk at some point, and I don't remember all of the piles of dirt and down trees and pile of junk in an old tank. And there's quite a bit of, if that's going to be the open space of the EA development, there's quite a lot of work to be done. So if we have a chance, when, when Pulte comes back with their definitive plan of the EA development, it would be good to request a little sidewalk, just looking at that connection, because we're going to have to deal with making it a decent open space. But that's for the future. And now it's 7:30, so we will open the hearing. I'm now opening the hearing for the scenic road hearing at 11 Farm Road. It's continued from April 20. And I welcome again Mr. Muller. Welcome to select, to planning board. And there is, there was one other person.
Yes, Mr. Paul Finger is here.
And I've, I've lost him. I think he was here and now I don't see him.
There he is.
Oh, yes, I do. Sorry, Paul. Welcome, welcome. Good. So I must say, the plans you sent were really clear. Thank you. That was great. And now it allows us to have the facts all straight. So I wonder if you'd like to share your screen and just run through the plan as you see it. You can show the plan that you sent, sent us, just so everyone who has not seen those plans gets oriented. Can you share your screen?
I don't know if I can do that.
You want me to do it, Jack?
Yeah, you got it in front of you, Paul.
Sure.
Oh, thank you.
Are you able to see that?
Yes. Is it possible to make it a little bit bigger?
Absolutely. Well, in other words, we'll have to take it step by step.
Yeah, that's okay.
So this is the, the pre-exist conditions before the Tufts moved into their home. Jack, I'll let you take over.
I think the top picture, which was the view towards the west, will show the existing asphalt area that extends out into the street. That, this picture, I believe, of Google is prior to my clients purchasing the property. But I think it clearly shows that there was, in fact, driveway in curb cut entrance to the street. You'll see the white picket fence bounded by the two granite pillars. I had previously submitted a 1982, I believe, plan that was utilized for, I believe it was for some work done on the septic, which had showed that behind this white picket fence was the area for the driveway. You can see the, the front door to the now legalized unit that was the subject of the Board of Appeals hearing. What we have determined is that the picket fence was removed, as well as seven feet plus or minus was removed on the right side of that stone pillar.
Want me to go to that next shot?
Oh, sure. Yeah, there you go, Paul. If you can do that, that way we can just, I, I won't be so verbose with all the pictures, but just so they can see.
Care with me for a minute?
Sure.
Next sheet.
There you go.
So.
Keep going up, my friend.
So there's the mentions, and then here's the view.
Right.
Okay, so that shows you what he did was, he went to his property line to re-asphalt the sidewalk and then continued it all the way down to the west driveway. That, I believe, is where my client described it as uneven and unfortunately is where the grandmother visiting during the baby shower had fallen. I know that they had worked on that all the way down to make that safer, but also obviously to improve the aesthetics in addition to the safety. So that entire area extended. There you go, Paul. Thank you. All the way down to the front. And stop right there, Paul, because I think everyone's familiar with the, the wall had actually extended all the way down to where the granite pillar is now. Where you're showing us, Paul, view from street to the east, the wall did extend all the way to that area. So that wall was removed and there's approximately 40 feet of that wall had been removed. There you go. And part of it was Part of it was rebuilt that would act as kind of um. I don't know if I want to call it a separator, but it acts. Um, to run a perpendicular wall from the street line back towards the home. And if you go down, yeah, identifying the, I think the pictures are a lot better for all of us, Paul. Yeah, there you can see, you can see it, it, he, he, no, go back. There you go. Um, it's about where the housekeeping unit's wall is, uh, the, the. The wall of the structure. Yes, so.
Maybe you could, if you could keep it on the plan, you know, I think we've all seen. What it looks like now and what it looked like before, but it's easier for us to talk about it if we focus on. Yeah, there we go.
Okay, there you go. So the red is obviously what was uh, removed. It has the approximate distances. Um, the. There was uh, sections that is not on there, which is back, um, that are butts off of the. Southwesterly corner of the structure. Um, there was a wall there is obviously not. Um, the walls under the Scenic Roads Act, but to be, you know, one hundred percent transparent, there was a section that. Came off of where it says LS there. Um, kind of created a bit of a, a. Separator between the driveway and the beds. Um, that is not on the plan, but the little area there was removed. But we're showing you just the uh, the boundary wall, which is described on the deed. Um, I went back, goodness, to the eighteen hundreds, looking for more information about. Uh, trying to place the boundary wall. Is it on town property or my client's property? And uh, statutory construction with the deeds, uh, quite frankly, um. We, we could argue uh, both ways. Um, I know the Scenic Roads Act says if you can't. Um, determine whether it's a um, wall, a private wall on the property owner or. Uh, the town right of way, then let's act it as if it is in the town right of way. And the only thing I can offer there in support of my clients. Someone's talking? Okay, um, the statutory construction of the deeds. This does state that if a wall is identified in the deed, it goes to the end of the wall. Um, I'm not trying to say that my client relied on that when he did work, because quite frankly and honestly. Um, my client had this work done without knowledge of the Scenic Roads Act. Um, and I think that's important here because he did go to building department, he did hire counsel, he did. Go to Board of Appeals. Um, he did what he thought was proper and there was no mention of Scenic Roads Act. And I know ignorance of the law is no excuse, but it does go to intent and the client did not intend to. Um, violate the Scenic Roads Act intentionally. Um, so I think he was simply looking for a way to improve the property. Uh, both uh, from a safety point of view, because the wall needed some structural work. And as is required under the Scenic Road Act, if you do remove any portions of a wall. Uh, you're required uh, to use that same material on site for other portions, and that's exactly what was done. No part of the wall that was taken down uh, was removed from the property. Um, he used it to fortify um, the wall all the way down. Um, I think I mentioned at the prior hearing that there was a large amount of overgrowth. And that would be on the section to the right, which shows forty foot. Um, and there was repaired down there after the overgrowth was removed. Quite honestly, um, part of removing the overgrowth as well as removing. Some of the shrubs in the trees, all my client's property, also affected uh, the integrity of the wall. But um, there was enough of the stone removed in order to rebuild. Um, the wall that extends off of the end of the house perpendicular to the roadway. As well as the wall all the way down to the roadway, including um, parts that were. To the right of the section that was removed on the east driveway. So I hope I've been thorough enough. Uh, the pictures are all before and after pictures. Some of the pictures will show you clearly. But the, the for sale sign was up. Um, so those were things that existed. The driveway certainly existed. Um, uh, to the right side prior to this, the curb cuts did. Um, I think we discussed uh, probably too much, maybe ad nauseam about a grass strip. And it looks like there was a dirt strip, quite honestly, um, that had extended. Um, down there and some blades of grass uh, were on there. I think my client's intention was simply to make that whole area safer. Um, so he had that asphalted all the way down. Well, I'll answer any questions. That's as thorough as, as I know it to be. Um, but we'll answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Muller. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Finger? Oh, Mr. Finger, could you tell us what your role in this is? Uh, are you uh, the contractor or uh, legal counsel?
No, uh, uh, Jack Mueller is the legal counsel. I'm a landscape architect. And I was working with the uh, the Tufts with the, with regard to the Conservation Commission, which we have resolved, uh, what. Uh, lan- a landscape needs to be mitigated.
Oh, good. Thank you. I just wanted to know, you know, what your role was. Uh, so I think I'd like to begin just by going back. Without wanting to go round and round as we did last time, going back to uh, where we left it uh, last time. Uh, part of the problem was that we didn't have a clear plan in front of us, but now we do, so it's a lot easier. Uh, and I think you'll recall that uh. We determined that, and this is basically assumed in the Scenic Road Act, that if there is a stone wall. That is on the border of the property such that it can't be determined exactly. Whether it's so, uh, which stone is inside and which stone is outside. That's the case all over town. And it is assumed that that is the property line. That's the general. Uh, usage around here and everyone seems to adhere to it unless the stone wall is. Is really in an unusual position, it's assumed to be at the property line. So we'll put that part to bed and I think you agree. Uh, we can, we can disregard that. Uh, the other uh, bit of controversy was, was there a driveway or was there not a driveway before? And um, we heard from the board and uh, from the DPW and. We, we're, we heard different views on both sides. On the one hand, there was an apron. Um, it went up probably to the property line. Uh, but at the time that we can see the pictures and the time that the property was purchased. It was a grass lawn behind there. Might have been a driveway in the past. We don't know that for sure. Uh, but. If there were an apron there going right up to the property line, then it's a curb cut. Uh, but on the other hand, if a driveway, let, let's just assume for a moment that. It was a driveway or at least the apron uh, gives it driveway uh, status. Let's put it that way. Let's just assume that. Uh, the, that apron has been expanded by seven feet. And that alone would trigger a uh, a driveway uh, application. To the DPW. So, you know, uh, whether, whether there's anyone who thinks it wasn't a driveway or was a driveway before. The, the driveway has been expanded to the point where it needs to have a new permit. So uh, I suggest that we, we set that aside. We're going to require a driveway permit. And in some respects, um, when a driveway is new or expanded. That has to be kind of permitted before we can really enforce a scenic road. Act, but on the other hand, knowing that uh, your client is going to have to get a driveway permit. Um, we can go ahead and talk about the stone wall. But let me just stay with the driveway just for a moment. Um, I think you do really have to put in a permit for the driveway and describe it as it is now. And that's okay. Uh, you, it's good that you submit it. We just get that whole thing put to bed. I think it's not to owners. And if for some reason, not by us, the, the permit is denied. Uh, you can appeal. And Gino, can you explain that process for us?
Yes, under the uh, the DPW driveway regulations, the appeal is to the planning board.
Okay, so if you appeal, it comes back to us and then we'll have to resolve it. But I think, uh, I think you should plan to start with the driveway permit. And I know, you know, there's so much paperwork, it's gonna. It, it gets discouraging, but I think it's not too complicated to do a driveway permit. And that way we can put it to bed, because that's what we all really like to do. Is that okay with you, Mr. Muller?
Uh, yes, actually, um, I, I don't have any, any issues with that, although quite frankly. And unfortunately, um, at the last planning board meeting, um, Mr. Colleen. Uh, stated that he would deny and not issue any driveway permits. So I guess. It's kind of a fait accompli, what's going to happen with that application. But uh, knowing there's an appeal process, obviously, we're going to end up um, back in front of the board. Um, it, I guess it is what it is. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, we understand that. But i- it is a way to allow the DPW to enforce their rules. We enforce our rules. You get. You, you go through the process and uh, we won't get into the kind of. Uh, you know, disputes we got into last time. Because our, our goal, just like your goal, is to um, is to get this resolved. So, uh, that's, I'm just making that proposal actually to the planning board. And I'd like to hear what you think of it.
Um, I mean, my thoughts, I know we've hit this issue before when someone's. Kind of, i- it has been confusing for some people, what comes first, a driveway permit or the request to move rocks for. Or stones from the, to widen entrance area. So I think um, last fall, we had this issue and we. Said it really needs to be that a driveway permit is pulled and then we can discuss. The drive, the stone removal for scenic roads. So I think we need to stick with the process, just especially if we're going to be consistent.
Yeah, thanks, Eddie May. Any other comments from the board?
I guess I, I, this is John Higley. I guess I'd say, and, uh, I guess an option is to, on that. Uh, east side is to restore the wall back to thirteen feet. So, but I thi- but if they, uh, if they don't want to do that, then I, I certainly agree with stick to the process.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, well, if they, once the driveway permit is resolved. Then we can talk about the stone wall. Uh, if it were restored to thirteen feet. Um, they would have to take out a bunch of pavement. Uh, the pavement, the extra pavement in the uh, right, can, can we, if we could set that aside just for now. And uh, wait for that driveway permit.
Actually, Gino, can I just, for a point of clarification, I mean, we're concerned with the stone wall and what's in front of it. If they restored the thirteen feet and basically eliminated the front. The driveway access on that side, is there anything stopping? Uh, there's nothing that says they have to remove that. Concrete, I mean. They just wouldn't have access to it from that driveway. Right, we.
Uh, you, you, oh, you, you mean behind the stone wall?
Right, do we?
Yeah, there's nothing that says they would have to remove that.
I mean, the, 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 the paving on their land behind the stone wall, we really don't have any jurisdiction over.
Right.
We only have jurisdiction from the stone wall to the road, or we, I say, we are DPW. So uh, eh, as long as we're going to get a driveway permit application. There are, a DPW is going to get it. Let's set that aside for now. Um, but maybe we should turn our attention to the forty feet of stone wall. In front of the house that was removed. And uh, that of course was done along with paving that entire. Uh, area to the edge of the road. And the area to the edge of the road. Is under our purr- purview, only in that it is in the right of way. And uh, I know in the Scenic Road Act, we do have jurisdiction over any trees. That might have been in that uh, right of way, but I don't think there were any previously. Uh, but what about the grass? Do you know, is that a planning board thing as well?
No. No, it's just the walls and trees.
Right, okay. So uh, although we do have. A, an issue with the pavement front going all the way to the wa- to the wall and from the street. Up to the sidewalk, because it is a safety issue. But anyway, let's just look at this removed stone wall for now. Um, that is a lot of stone wall to remove, even though the stones were moved elsewhere. And uh. I think that, that wall has to be uh, reconstituted. Could I hear from the rest of the board on that?
Um, I can say that I, I would rather look at this. As a, as a total event and, and um, so I'd rather discuss. I can cer- I can say, give you my opinion about that, that portion of the wall that was removed, but I'd rather give my opinion about. Uh, the overall project when, in, come back, if, if it's going to come back, I don't know, it might not come back to us. But if there's an application to, if there is an application to DPW. Um, and it's declined. Um, that, then it would come back to that, then we could look at both and discuss both together, which is what I'd rather do. If it's not declined, then come back to us and we'll uh, look at, I think we can make comment about. Uh, the east and the west side of the stone wall issue uh, together. I, that's, I, I'd rather talk about them together.
Yeah, I, I think it's correct and I think uh, kind of connected to that stone wall issue, the east, the long east stone wall issue. Is the pavement right up to, from the road to the stone wall. Uh, that, that is a DPW issue, but it's all, you know, part of the same project. So. It seems to me if, if we allow uh, all or. Most of that stone wall to remain, that we should consider. Uh, the whole sidewalk area, which is kind of unlike. Any other sidewalk along that road and then it goes right down to the berm onto the road and doesn't really. Doesn't really give a, an adequate safe separation between the traffic and anyone walking on that sidewalk.
Yeah, again, the scenic road hearing, that's not our issue, but if we can talk about sort of remedying the whole thing. I can weigh in and I agree. I think that the dr- grass strip. Uh, and however it's described, I think ought to be restored. Um, but that's not a scenic road hearing issue.
Uh, no. But we might be able to collaborate and find a solution that works for everybody. I mean, one option, I, I think we agree for safety reasons. That, that grass strip, even though I agree with Mr. Muller, it was dirt, part of it had been badly paved. There was grass growing up in it, sorry bits of grass trying to make their way through. Uh, it was in very, very bad shape and I understand why the uh, Tufts might have wanted to uh, repave it, but. Uh, there again, they didn't know, I understand this, but uh, that was on town land, so they, they needed a permit. To do any paving there, let alone go. to do any paving there, let alone go all the way to the road, which is kind of against what the town does in the town's right of way. So one solution might be, I think you're gonna be obliged, in other words, to restore that grass strip. I mean, you're gonna have to move the pavement, remove the pavement, the pavement between a reasonably, a reasonable width sidewalk and the edge of the road, just for safety. And install grass there. And I understand that that's an expense. It involves cutting the asphalt. But I think asphalt is, is cuttable. And putting some real dirt in there and just throwing on some grass seed and getting it going again. But if, if you were willing to do that and indicated to DPW that you were willing to do that, I mean, you really have to do it anyway. It's not a matter of willing or not. It's not safe the way it is. And it, it shouldn't have been repaved. I would suggest that we consider allowing the owner to restore the stone wall only up to the new walkway. That looks like maybe, I can't tell from here, but maybe 25 or 30 feet of the stone wall restored in front. And allow the owners to keep the driveway that now goes straight out to the sidewalk or to the driveway. I'm just throwing that out as a possible solution to this, that you know, conceives they made a new walkway, we don't want, if we don't have to, to make them, you know, put a stone wall over their new walkway. But on the other hand, it has to be safe for everyone. So I'm throwing that out as a proposal to the planning board.
Well, again, if, if it were, if we could look at both the east and the west wall issues together, if it, if that were the case, then I think I would be in favor of the east wall being enlarged to where it is. Just keep, keep the driveways where they are, both of them, and restore the stone wall on the west side, the, there was the 40 feet removal, restore it, as you said, up to the, the new walkway. And I think it would be a gesture, a good gesture to restore a small grass strip. I think that would be a good solution.
That would certainly, it seems like a reasonable solution to me.
Yeah, I think that, I think I, I look at it and say, you know, it's clearly and, and been acknowledged, it was, things were done in error. And I think the, this whole process has been added expense. Had it been done in a correct sequence, it might look something similar. But but I think that this has been a, a quite a bit of extra expense. So I think there's, and time. And I think the remedies are gonna cost things. And so I think there's, there's a mens here that would be made if this was the solution. And I think in the end, it'll result in a nice looking property, and I think the stone wall restoration up to the walkway would serve its purposes, which is a boundary that, that it is. So I think from protecting the scenic road, I think we do a good job, we meet that obligation in in terms of aesthetics and, and the boundary. The fence, the gate was not a boundary, so I think restoring it, yeah, but I think this is a compromise, that I think the homeowners can, has gone through a lot of extra expense and learned a painful lesson, and I think that's appropriate. So I think this will result in a fair compromise.
Could I hear from the other planning board members? How, what do you think, Chris?
Um, I'm in agreement with everything that Marion, that you have said and that John has said. I would, I would hate to have him bring the wall back all the way to restore it to the way it was because because of the walkway. And, and if DPW recognizes it as a driveway on the east side, I would have no problem overlooking that seven foot of stone wall there. I mean, so I'm, I'm basically in agreement with you.
Good. Will, Will, how about you? What do you think?
Yeah, I think I'm basically in agreement as well. I would like to see the grass strip back. I would like to see as much of the stone wall restored as possible, and I agree that it doesn't make sense to try to restore it over the walkway. I think I differ from Chris, I would like to see that extra seven feet on the east side. Maybe some, some mitigation of the expanded asphalt apron there to correspond with that. But I, I think the plan, I'm generally in agreement.
Could we hear from Mr. Muller?
Is there any, I guess, kind of, stuck on the sidewalk a little bit, I don't know, so if sidewalk's not really in our jurisdiction, I guess sidewalk would be in DPW's jurisdiction. I know it wasn't in the best shape, but it was, you know, I know there's a lot of, some of our struggles with putting new sidewalks in in town is there's now new requirements for how those sidewalks have to be width wise, certain width and distance from the road, and so now we don't have a process as a planning board that I'm aware of to to fix the sidewalk correctly. I, I'm struggling with what we should say there, and we've also said at the start of this meeting that we wanted to stick to a process of asking for the driveway permit and then go through the process of discussing when it's, you know, likely to be appealed if that happened. So I, I'm wondering, are we at a stuck point where we need to continue the hearing or, and I don't know, but I also, I know that each of these hearings, there's a lot of time and energy and experts' time and expense, so you know, the stone wall, we have a, we, the Scenic Road Act was passed for a reason, because we all like our rural New England charming character, and if people think you know, that they can just move walls or, you know, just, then it's, they'll slowly erode. I know there's a lot of walls around New England that are falling down. I mean, they were built by farmers clearing their land and stacking them up, so yeah, they're not, you know, mortared solid things. So I'm just, I guess I'm stuck on the process here.
Well, I think if, if we if the driveway permit application goes into DPW, only after that is resolved, we can finally resolve the seven feet of stone wall that's now covering that asphalt.
Might I suggest that it seems to be that we have to do a little bit more fact finding as far as our group. We also have to consult with our client. And the first thing is, let, you've, it's fairly clear that you're looking for us to go for the driveway permit first, and then come back and then talk about the stone wall. Since we're going to DPW, let's find out about the sidewalk and the grass strip, and since the stone wall is a given, and the property line is a given, there's a certain width to the asphalt berm that is along the roadway, let's find out what their recommendations will be for, in fact, a grass strip. Once we have that, we can, again, consult with our client. We can come back with whether that is something that we think is a reasonable compromise as far as one portion of this. The other area is that all the existing stone that was taken out from the existing walls has already been used, so we'd be importing stone. My question is, based on the historic nature of this area and the aesthetic values and the, the fact that there is not a uniform stone wall that runs all the way down and up and down Farm Road, there's a combination of various elements that actually make up this scenic road. Is it a, is it a possibility that you might consider allowing us to go back in with a ornamental wood fence consistent with some of the other fences along Farm Road, similar to the wooden fence and gates that came in on the driveway on the east side? Is that a possibility, and would that be a consideration?
You know, according to the Scenic Road Act, we really can't consider a fence a, an acceptable replacement for a stone wall. That's in the state law, basically. So no, we can't consider that. But as far as rebuilding the fence, you know, people, people restore and improve their stone fences along the road all the time. And it doesn't, they don't have to be the same stones that were placed in 1774 or whenever it was. They just have to be stones that make a consistent look stone wall, kind of consistent with the rest of the stone wall that's in the immediate area. So you see a lot of variation among stone walls around town, where people have fixed them over time. You know, they do crumble and they get rebuilt, but a stone wall is a stone wall, so.
They do get rebuilt, but this would be a new stone wall. So I agree with you 100%. Masonry is actually in the family, so I understand about stone walls. This is not a repair of a stone wall, you know, that was in disrepair, it was falling down and requiring it, the stones to be put back into place. This actually will be importing stone outside from whatever the stone was here. I think that we could, you know, if that's the case, we'll, we'll go back to our client, explain to them what has to be done. We'll do the best job that we can in terms of accomplishing that. But if, if the answer from, you know, since I, I heard, I heard staffs comment that, you know, we gotta make sure that basically people know that you can't do that. So the, the, the sense was it's more punitive. And my guess is that this is not a case where it needs to be punitive. This is something that, you know, we have to explain to it, it's part of the education. They didn't do it because they want to violate the Scenic Road Act. They did it because they weren't aware of it. And, you know, it doesn't, it's not note, it's not noted in deeds that it's a scenic road. When they, they buy the property, it's not part of any of the transactions that goes into anything from between the town and, and, and the homeowner, it just was in fact a oversight. And so that's why I was looking to see if there was a way to come up with a compromise as far as the wall was concerned. But I think that I've heard clearly that you want this wall back, at least a portion of the wall back to the, the walkway, and so we can bring that back to them.
Yeah, that's great, I understand. I totally understand that this was, they didn't intend to violate the Scenic Road Act, they didn't know about it. They didn't know about other things. And we're not, we have no desire to be punitive. I mean, these are our neighbors, these are people that, you know, someday we'll get to know them, I hope. It's not, it, it's just a matter of our goal, which is to, and, and the law, actually, which is to maintain stone walls along our roads. John, do you have a comment?
Yeah. I think that's the first time I've properly raised my hand. The, the, there's two recent examples that come to mind, right in the corner of Farm and, and South Main, when the sidewalk was put in and the homeowner built a stone wall. And the, and used masonry, but so it doesn't show. And then over on on Mills, no, not Mill, Woodland, on Woodland, homeowner restored a very dilapidated stone wall. And the instructions from the planning board were, on the scenic road, and instructions from the planning board were to, were fairly specific. And it's an example where they brought stone in to add to the rubble that was there and made, and did a very good job. They also, in that case, I think most of it had some mortar reinforcement, but it's hidden, so it's not seen. And the other parts of it, I think, are still free stone. So and I think there's a very good example of a wall being a fantastic wall project that's being done right on, on Main Street right now by, by the split. An excellent project. So, and that, that has two kinds of stone wall, mortared and unmortared, freestone, it's really superb. So those are all examples, I think, of, of bringing stone in.
Sue Tyler, you have a comment. You'll have to unmute.
I am unmuted. Hi, Susan Tyler, 26 Western Avenue, a member of the Traffic Safety Committee. I'd like to see the sidewalk certainly addressed, but I do have two questions. It seems to be going around as to the sidewalk being redone and then cutting the asphalt to put a little bit of a delineation between the road edge and the sidewalk. Who's gonna do their work? Because again, that still remains town property from where the stone wall had been to the road. So that needs to be clarified, and certainly there needs to be supervision and direction from the DPW. And then I keep hearing, I'm looking at your schematic here, excuse me. Forty feet, which approximately we moved from in front of the house, seven feet to the east side. So we're talking 47 feet. Where were the seven, 47 feet? Where were those rocks actually reused on the property? And, because I've driven by numerous times, I don't see 47 feet of stone wall built anywhere else. So I personally like to, the old rocks were weathered, they had moss, they had little lichens and the algae's all growing in them. Where this, where did the 47 feet go? Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll let the, Mr. Muller, or, you know, the landscape architect probably would be best at this. The landscaper could tell us, he took, did tell us that some were used on the interior part of the property. And I believe some were added to the wall to the west that you can't see here, you can just see the edge of that wall. So maybe you could fill us in?
Jack, do you want to handle that?
Yes. She had two points. The first is, I think we've already addressed that Paul mentioned just previous, that we will need to speak to DPW regarding the sideways reconstruction. In terms of the walls, I think we all already mentioned that my client had used some of the walls to reinforce some of the existing wall. An entirely new wall is running perpendicular to the street line, going to the boundary of the jutting piece on the front of the existing building. There may have been some used also in the back, but I've been told to my client that all rock that was removed was reused on the property. I'd be quite honest, I didn't get an exact location for all of it. But assured, especially with the cost of, of building materials, that it was put to good use back on the property, nothing was removed from the property.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think that's sufficient. So, okay, at this point, we went a little bit of ahead of ourselves in response to Eddie May, what you said, that we do need to have that driveway permit approved, or, you know, get it submitted. Approved or, you know, get it submitted. If it's denied, then get appealed. We need to get that resolved one way or another uh before we can. Uh, decide on the stone wall by the new driveway. But I was going ahead just to save time and talking about the se- the stone wall. And scenic road act for the part to the west that goes over to the walkway. So, uh, Mr. Muller, I think you have our proposal then at this point.
Yes, could I, I'm sorry, could I ask the board a question, please?
Sure.
Um, would it, would it be a good idea um for my clients to? Um, take pictures um first visit and take pictures of areas that are adjacent. The property to the right, um, property to the left, maybe across the street, but along the area of Farm Road. Um, such that if there is going to be a replication um or restoration of any portion. Um, I'm aware that sometimes uh no one is truly keeping. A visual record, um, and I think it's probably when only when there's a complaint lodged or an action with the town. Um, but if there is in fact uh the aesthetic value of the scenic roads act, they talk about scenic and. Aesthetic characteristics. It does talk about uh section nine as being the guiding principles where restoration is ordered. Um, what is it? Do you think it's a good idea that I have my clients check out what is in the immediate vicinity? Um, where they're gonna do some restoration work? Or is this the board just uh strongly suggesting that? Um, that replacement portion of the forty foot that is removed. Um, is kind of, that's it, re- rebuild that wall. I know Mr. Finger mentioned uh fence. I don't know what else there might be, but in the context of. New sidewalks, um, we may find ourselves with DPW. Putting in a restoring an area that perhaps. Um, has more safety than aesthetic value. And if that's the case on the sidewalk and it may affect the. Um, the wall, is it a good idea at all to take a look at what may have been done or what currently exists? In a butters or neighboring properties, um, that might suggest. Something other than only a wall, no fence. Um, I don't know what else there could be, but there may be um some other either ornaments or maybe granite. Postings um with with. Um, a post and beam fence in between that could possibly be a uh. Uh, less costly and just as aesthetically pleasing. Um, solution to this, or um is the board rigid in in what they're suggesting?
Oh, well, I hate to think that we're too rigid, but you know, we are bound by the scenic road act. And uh, I think the restoration of that uh thirty feet of wall or how however long it is. Uh, how it should look uh should be guided by what's already there on that very same property. Actually, from the west uh main driveway. Uh, the tough driveway, all the way to the west to the edge of the property is a long lovely stone wall. That is very much like the wall that was removed, actually, except the wall that was removed, it was overgrown, so you didn't see it that much. And you're right, it was not probably in greatest repair. But you also have the area of wall uh just to the. Uh, east of the part that was removed. And uh, it seems reasonable that the thirty feet of restoration. Uh, need not be expensive stone. It need not even be mortared. It should be kind of like the wall is across the rest of the front of the property. You still have a lot of stone wall remaining on the property. And I don't think you'd want to put something that wasn't consistent with that, so. Uh. You know, the 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 bottom line is that that we can't say that uh. A fence, even with granite posts or something in between, is the same as a stone wall. And the scenic road act is about stone walls. So, uh, John, you want to comment?
Uh, yeah, I I think that it raises a good question. I think. Um, uh, using Google Earth, you can see, or or whatever it's called, street view. Um, you can see what was there before the property was sold. And uh part uh further to the west, there was of the. Of the west driveway, there was a a a grassy strip. Um, and this is what's been mentioned, but I think in the context of this question. To to the right of the west driveway, the main driveway. Um, the grass strip looks like it was, I'm guessing, six inches wide and about five feet long. That's it. The rest was paved down to uh the the east. Uh, gated uh curb cut driveway. So there wasn't that much there. Um, in in terms of restoration, I think it shows what the wall looked like before very easily. So, uh, um, I I don't know how to show that on this uh zoom, but.
I think we have photographs of that.
Yeah, I think so. The photographs, I think, would be a good reference to to answer that question. So. Uh. Yeah, you can see.
This is a little strip.
Yeah, where where your black dot is.
Yeah, from Birmingham, this is a little grass strip we're talking about.
Yeah, and and if you could look uh to the to the left. It it may not show, but you know, we're sort of. Yeah, so so when I look further up, further west of the main driveway. Uh, there's a very significant grass strip, and then when you get past further east past these gate. Uh, curb cut driveway, there's more grass. So the only grass strip that was there before this house was purchased. Not that it was, it's a good thing, but there was only a a small section of of grass. So in terms of restoration, um, not a lot to do. In terms of improving it, um, and making it comply with our current standards or something, that's another issue. So, um. But I think the safety thing that I my my interpretation right now at this point of the hearing is that. Uh, establishing a a some grass if it's doable. And if there's not space, at least establishing a a uh a curb, at least as significant as what's was there before. For a safety reason, uh, you know, a a more established curb might be safer.
Yeah, more curb. Uh, I mean, the the advantage of a grass strip is that it's a a visual cue.
Sure.
Well. Uh, Sue Tyler, you have another comment. You need to unmute.
Regarding the picture that's there right now, yes, I I agree, there's a very limited um grass strip there. But if you look, there's at least a foot of grass that goes all along. The town side of that stone wall that was removed, every bit of that. So at the very base of the stone wall, so if the sidewalk was shifted back to there. We could clearly take that that green strip that had been there at the base of the stone wall. And shift that to the stone side, to the street side, I'm sorry. You you would have your um, the green strip that's needed because every bit of that. Now at the base has been paved all the way up to where that stone wall existed. So there is room. Again, when the sidewalk is is restored, and this is done, to. Shift that green strip that was at the base of the stone wall out to the side of the street for safety purposes. Thank you.
Right. I mean, the width of of the the required width of the sidewalk is sort of out of our our Bailey width.
Eh eh exactly, but but as far as from the from the for DPW. And what was removed and paved over by this current resident, um. To no fault of their own. They didn't know what the regs were, I understand that. But you can see from that picture, there was a boundary of of grass at the base of the wall. And so we could, we can get that for safety purposes, we can utilize that again. And take, that's got to be at least a foot there between the sidewalk and the stone wall. And put that back out towards the street and the uh the uh roadside. Thank you.
Let let me get, as I said, let me get the information from BPW what their requirements are. Um, and then we could debate for forever whether there's a benefit of a foot of grass. All I know is that I think it's going to be extremely difficult to maintain. Twelve inches, fifteen inches, sixteen inches of lawn between two asphalt surfaces. That's going to cook during the during the summer, um, but we can.
But that's. Yeah. Uh, thanks, Paul, for your comment. Uh, I think uh right now, I don't want to go too much further on this. Because it's really a DPW issue. Uh, so, uh, Gino, do you have a comment?
Yes, just just in terms of uh the discussion of replacing the wall. I just think it might be important to note that, uh, while done inadvertently. Essentially, what happened was a public stone wall or a public asset. By by using those stones to build a perpendicular wall on the property. The public asset was was turned into a private ass- asset. So just in terms of helping to justify the restoration, I think it's important to note that. That that stone wall was in in essence was taken away from the public right of way and moved on to the private property.
Right, so uh Gina, let me see if I understand the sequel to what you said. Uh, in that case, are you saying that they would need to bring those same stones back?
No, 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 not at all, not at all. I'm just saying that if they had to build that private wall. They would have needed to purchase stones elsewhere and had them brought in. Instead, they used the public stones. So, so the unfairness of asking them to to. To do that now is not all that unfair because they already used the public stones for the private wall.
Right, okay, that, yeah, that's clear. Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Muller, do you have any more comments?
Um, no, I actually believe Ms. Tyler's uh suggestion may um. Along with Mr. Finger speaking to DPW, maybe there's an opportunity here that. That, and I hope the board would accept that we come back to you. Uh, we may come back with. A amalgamation of all that people have talked, including Ms. Tyler, because we'll have to speak with our clients, but. I think my clients, um, they want to do not only was what aesthetically pleasing, but what's safe. I mean, they're both healthcare workers. They just had a new baby and now I understand working on another. So they plan on being there, so um I don't want the board to feel that that when we come back, it's a yes or no. We may get information from DPW uh and others who've offered it. And speaking with my clients um to propose to the board um. Things that um perhaps either they may be out of the jurisdiction, but I think I'm interested in trying to um. Get a whole solution to this, if you will, as uh Madam Chair had suggested. Um, so that we work together with DPW uh and the planning board. So that everyone feels we've got a fair uh and reasonable settlement here.
Well, thank you. That sounds reasonable to me. So, uh, does anyone else have a comment on this? Uh, I hope you've understood that the planning board is not being punitive. We're just looking for a solution just like you, but we have our laws that we need to uphold and we have to be even handed with everyone. So I think we've, we've suggested a good compromise on the stone wall. And um I think we'll be able to resolve this, so we look forward to seeing it again.
A point of fact, has there been, you would know better than I, has there been any restorations of? Um. You know, scenic roads act property where there's been something other than a wall? Or is it wall or nothing, pardon the expression? Um, you know, and that's just trying to get an education. Is anyone on the board aware where? Where a wall has been taken and there was a third alternative besides nothing? Uh, restore the wall as was fence we brought up, um.
What other alternative are you are you thinking about?
Well, you you mentioned that the state law does not allow a fence, so I'm just wondering is. In your experience, has there ever been any suggestions anyone has come up with for something else? I mean, is there planting? Is there roses? Is there a group of trees? Is there some boundary that BPW or street might say? May not look as good, but it's a hell of a lot safer. I'm just wondering if any of the board members or anyone has experienced this before. Versus it's, again, wall or nothing in terms of restorative measures.
Well, maybe John can speak to this because he preceded me as chair. Uh, I don't know of any loophole in the scenic road act that allows. Uh, shrubs or fences to replace stone walls.
I I can say for, not for stone walls, for trees, which is part of the scenic road act. Um, trees have been taken inappropriately without permission and. Um. Um, and they've been taken with permission where they, the restoration wasn't necessarily to put uh trees back at the same spot. Um, so there has been uh re- uh restoration, but by putting. Uh, trees in in uh si- si- similar or close area, but not the same spot. But not stone walls. I I can say stone walls have, seeing stone walls have been, have been altered by going through the process properly and. And uh been allowed to be altered for safety reasons, you know, so that's been done.
The alterations that we've encum- encountered have been like request to move something. Slightly, you know, five inches this way or or there, but not, um. Yeah, there's no, there's never been an alteration of not replacing stones.
In fact, the planning board, we ourselves have been the subject of this, of the, of not the scenic road act. But but the uh historic preservation rules of when we wanted a sidewalk. Uh, in area of town center that's being built even as we speak. And we had to go through quite a process to agree on the kind of stone wall that would be acceptable there. So a stone wall was rebuilt and a stone wall was built up. That had been much lower and all rubble, uh, so that was a change, but uh, you know, it was. It was done within the historic preservation rules, so we have to follow the law too, just like everyone else.
I am regarding that wall, Marion, I think we had three conversations about the color of the mortar.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, it was not easy.
Eh eh if, Marion?
Uh, yeah, briefly, so go ahead.
Yeah, I know three three locations in town. I won't divulge the locations. But um, yes, three other people in town have removed stone walls and they had to restore them back.
Right.
So there 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 is a precedence. You take it down, you put it back.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Sue. Okay, uh, thanks for your patience, Mr. Muller and um. And thank you uh to, I keep losing your landscaper.
Paul Finger, yes, he's got a, he had a hearing in in uh in the end over again at eight thirty, so he's probably.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. Well, uh, thanks for uh. Hearing us out on this and we look forward to seeing you again.
So do we, do we continue this to a date certain, or would you just like me to speak with Gino, or how how will this handle?
Uh, I think we need to, uh. You speak to Gino because we need to have the uh application in for uh the driveway and get that. Resolve first.
But but at the same time, we should continue it to a date certain, otherwise we need to go through re-advertising and re-notifying. Go through re-advertising and re-notifying the butters.
Okay, thanks.
We have.
But we can continue it not to the next meeting, but the following one if.
If, if that's, if that's what makes sense, yeah.
Yes.
That would be, uh, in our second meeting in June, it'll be the.
It would normally be the fifteenth, I think, which is. Uh, town elections, I don't know if that interferes.
Hmm. Oh, oh, well, we're not in, the only reason it would interfere in the past is because we met in Town Hall.
Right, so Zoom, I guess it doesn't matter, but.
If we're on Zoom, I think it doesn't matter. Unless there's a rule against it.
There, there's a rule against holding a zoning hearing on Election Day. But not, uh, not the scenic road or other type of hearing.
Speak with DPW.
Um, though we might want to, um.
No.
Have it be at eight o'clock just to, so there's no, there's no conflict with the election day.
Oh, that's great, okay, so, um.
Interesting.
Can we have a motion to, uh, resume to close the hearing now? And continue it to June fifteenth at eight PM?
Sure, but we're not closing the hearing, we're just continuing the hearing, motion to continue the hearing, eight PM, June fifteenth.
Yes.
I will second that.
Okay, let's take a vote. Uh, John?
Aye.
Addie Mae?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is continued to June fifteenth.
Did you vote, Marion?
Oh, I didn't vote. I'm an aye. So, it's five to zero. And we'll see you again June fifteenth, and of course, you can communicate with Gino. In the interim for any guidance that you may need.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on with our agenda, we're, um. Only about an hour late for our next hearing, but we're actually, uh. The hearing that we're taking up now is the Meadowbrook Acres definitive subdivision. Which, uh, the developer has requested be continued to August third. So can I hear a motion to continue the hearing of the Meadowbrook Acres definitive subdivision to August third?
Motion to continue the hearing of Meadowbrook Acres to August third.
And the second?
At seven thirty?
Seven. Let's say seven thirty.
At seven thirty.
I will second that.
Okay, uh, John?
Aye.
Addie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so continue to August third. Okay, current planning board business. Uh, we covered Coolidge Crossing, let's turn to the Pines and Apple Hill Estates. Recall those are the Lebarsky proposals for forty-one North Main and thirty-one Hunting Lane. There was a ZBA meeting, uh, regarding these on, uh, May sixth. And so we have a couple of things to do this evening, one is just to review what happened at the ZBA on May sixth. And then to take up, uh, our input to ZBA regarding stormwater. On both properties, actually. So, uh, Addie Mae, I think you were at that hearing as well. Uh, John, you were there, I believe. I was there. Uh, Chris, were you there?
No.
Okay, and Will, you were there?
Which, which hearing?
Uh, this is the, uh, Lebarsky Properties, uh. Thirty-one Hunting Lane and forty-one North Main. The Pines and Apple Hill. It was on.
Yeah. Are you talking about the, the Planning Board meeting that day?
No, this is a zoning board, zoning board of.
No, I, I was not at the zoning board, no.
Yeah, okay, great, sorry, that was confusing. Okay, um. Would someone like to kick off on this one? It was a pretty interesting hearing. John, how about you?
I'm looking for my notes right now.
Okay, let's let Gino kick it off and we'll chime in.
Okay, uh. Well, actually, I was, I, I had a conflict that I missed the first hour, hour and a half of that, of that hearing. Uh, but then I did join in and, um, probably the big, one of the biggest takeaways was that. Um, the, uh, the hydrogeologist made a presentation. And, uh, along with recommenda- he, he expressed, he, he didn't have definitive conclusions, but expressed concern about the well impacts. He recommended.
Just, just for, for us, which hydrogeologist, because there were, there's the peer reviewer and then there's.
Jim Vernon?
J- Jim Vernon from Novus Group.
And he's, he's the, he was hired by the town.
Hired by the town, correct. Um, and he had recommendations for a phase two, uh, for more information. And, um. The. Somebody needs to. Okay, um, and, uh, the. I guess for lack of a better term, I'll call it the regular peer reviewer. Um, whose scope of work included a wetlands, uh, analysis and impacts of, on the wetlands there. Uh. Was prepared to go to the next step too. However, neither of those were, uh, agreed to, neither next step wa- was agreed to by the applicant. Um, they were not allowed, they were not providing the funding for those. Um, those next steps, nor were they allowing access to the property. Uh, so that tho- those two professionals could do their work even if somebody else was paying for it. So I think in my mind, those were the biggest outcomes. Also. It was noted that they were not inclined to grant. Any extension of the ZBA's deadline, which is approximately May thirty-first, and the next hearing is on, uh, May twenty-seventh. So that will be the final meeting and then, um, unless something changes, and then. Uh, ZBA, if they close that night, will have forty days to craft a decision.
Right, so it sounded like they are gonna have to close because the developer is going to want to close it. Um, yeah. Several things were brought up, but I, since you weren't there in the beginning, I just want to remind the Planning Board of. What the ZBA reminded everyone at that meeting of, which is that, uh, the ZBA has three choices. Um, you, they grant, e- either they deny the proposal altogether. Or grant it, or grant it with conditions. And, uh, Mr. Novak reminded people that to deny. Uh, requires substantial public health risk. With evidence that a public health. Uh, that a public health. Um. Outcome, a bad public health outcome, that is a bad effect on public health. Uh, would happen if the development went forward, forward as planned. But you pointed out, it requires evidence that a public health issue is more likely than not. So it's a very high bar that they have to meet. And that was a good reminder because, you know, a lot of comments are things that are wrong with it and they may well be wrong. But it's not more likely than not going to cause a serious public health issue in the town. So that sort of helped to focus people's minds. Um. There, there were the two peer reviewers, the original one, Tom Houston from EcoTech and, uh. And, uh, what's his name, who I always forget? Uh, you just talked about him.
Jim Vernon.
Jim Vernon. Uh. And they brought up a lot of the same things. In general, they both did talk about stormwater though. And, uh, so those comments were particularly interesting because. Stormwater is a planning board issue locally. And, um, I proposed at the meeting, or I, I told the ZBA that they should expect some planning board comments. On the stormwa- on the stormwater plan, even though. Uh, the forty B process does not allow. Uh, the local regulations to apply. The stormwater regulations that we have locally are the same as the state, the DPW, EPA. So it is worthwhile to point out to them what to watch out for because. It's not like a, a state examiner is gonna come out and look at the stormwater situation. They're gonna use the peer review information and any input they have from us. So both Dashang Wang and, uh, who was a, an, another reviewer. A hydrogeologist hired by the butters. And, uh, Tom Houston, the hydrogeologist hired by the town. Uh, pointed out that. Water mounding is a big concern on the property because. The, uh, the overburden of soil is very thin, groundwater is maybe two, at the most four feet down. So. All the effluent from the septic system has to be handled, uh, on the property. And the developer has argued that there won't be any significant change in groundwater, uh, runoff and stormwater runoff. Uh. Uh, because of their. Of their, their recharge, uh. Structures that they're building, but anyway, Gino knows a lot more about this than I do. But I thought there still are problems that are not addressed, that the ZBA needs to be alerted to. So Gino put together a letter and maybe we should look at that now.
Can I ask a follow-up question about one of the things that you know just said?
Sure.
Um, so Gino, you said that the, the property owners, the property owners did not allow access to their property for the follow-up work, but. Um, my understanding of the work. That Jim Vernon was gonna do was related to looking at like. A progression of aerial photos to look for like bedrock fracturing and the direction and magnitude of bedrock fractures. And then also to study where the butter wells are in, in, in relation to those fractures. And to think about potential impact to specific butters, and I just wondered, I mean, that didn't seem like it needed property access. So I was wondering if that work proceeded or not.
That is correct, that, that portion of the work, he, he would like to go onsite as well. But that portion of the work could, uh, could be done, but there's still a funding issue.
Right, right. Uh, I think that they had. Uh, authorized some dollar amount to be spent by the town if the property owner didn't. Um, didn't want to.
That, that, that's right as well, but ZBA does not have.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, uh, we're trying to get, I've been trying to get some, you know, answers on that, whether the town. Can or would come up with the money, but, um. I did not feel comfortable telling the consultant to go ahead when there was not a secure money source.
Right, and then the, uh, the only other thing I would add to the meeting was that there was a lot of talk, for those of us who went on the sidewalk, there was a lot of talk about. The fact that there was standing water in the area of the planned leach field. And the, um, developers, um. Uh, wastewater engineer apparently said there was no vernal pool there, it was not classified as a vernal pool, it was classified as a flooded depression, I think. Um, and so there was a lot of, one of the residents spoke up and explicitly stated that, um. That one of their butters said that they, they've seen it all the time, all spring. Um, winter and spring, but it just seemed like there was just a difference of. Fact or opinion about the existence or persistence of that particular, the, the standing water in that area. And those of us who only saw it for a couple, for one, at one point in time can. Don't, don't know.
Right, that, that really needs an onsite analysis, because just.
Absolutely.
Just the, the presence of standing water does not make it a vernal pool.
Right, right.
I had a question about that, actually. Even, uh, i- if it were a vernal pool, it's not a danger to public health. Would a vernal pool be enough to deny the project? It would be enough to deny a title, a Title V septic system, certainly, but. This is not a real septic system, so. You know, I'm not sure, even if it is determined to be a vernal pool, if that would. Have an impact.
Does DEP, uh, have jurisdiction over vernal pools? Because they would be the permitting authority, right, for. Maybe jurisdiction is the wrong word, but DEP would be the one permitting the leach field.
Right.
Right, I don't think DEP has authority over journal, vernal pools. Um.
I think they do.
That's DC dot Divisional Conservation Recreation.
It would just be a matter of citing, right, I mean, you wouldn't be able to have your. Wellhead zone, or I mean, you're not your well, but your leach field zone extend into, or I'm not sure, actually.
Well, where they had marked off the leach field, they had sort of marked it for the sidewalk and there was standing water. Right in, in the area that they had marked, and it had rained twenty-four hours prior, but, you know, a little twenty-four hours prior. So either the water was not, not draining, which doesn't bode well for a leach field. Or, um, or it was some sort of groundwater, high groundwater.
Oh, getting back to, I mean, I don't know that we have, I mean, it's, that's conservation, so I think though, getting back to the area that Planning Board does have some say, which is. The stormwater management, uh, Marion, I know Gino sent around the draft letter. Um, I don't know if we wanted to go through the draft letter.
I think we should, yeah, absolutely, unless there, there are other issues people want to, uh, talk about first, I think we should go through it. Can you share it on your screen, Gino, or if you can't, I can.
Um.
I've got it pretty.
If you have it handy, why, why don't we do, do yours?
Sure. Okay, let me just get it open here. Okay, now, oops. Hold on just a second. Okay, can you see that? Um, I will scroll down so we can actually. Get it in view.
Right, by the way, vernal pools are under a DEP.
Oh, they are, okay. Okay, I mean, the ZBA, as, as we said, are gonna be relying on the peer reviewers and, uh, and planning board comments. So this is what Gino came up with, maybe we could take it one paragraph at a time. Gino, I, I made a little space between the paragraphs, just because it's, makes them look more important. First of all, there was the vernal pool and wetlands. So, uh, my concern, I mean, this is totally concerned because it tells you how impermeable and thin the soils are up there. Uh. But, um. I don't think it can be argued to be a, a threat to public health, so. I'm not sure if mass housing would pay any attention to that. But anyway. They, incidentally, the stormwater requirements, uh, cannot be waived. So I don't think they can request a waiver of any of the requirements of the, of the DEP or EPA. So I don't think they can request a waiver of any of the requirements of the, of the DEP or EPA.
We fixed the typo. There was a very small typo, insignificant typo in three.
I can't hear you, John.
Oh, sorry. There was a small typo. It looks like it's fixed. I don't see it now.
Oh, yeah. I, I saw it and I fixed it. Right. The second one is basically something that both Mr. Human and Doshang and I think all three peer reviewers for the town or the abutters pointed out. And that is that, first of all, the, the soils are very thin. The leach field will be releasing water continually at the top of this kind of graded property. And will be creating a, a mound of water that's constantly flow, flowing down through the overburden. And so when they say that the stormwater runoff won't continue, won't be changed particularly, that is when the developers hydrologist said there won't be that big a change in stormwater runoff over what's already occurring. They didn't take into account the fact that the soil will be saturated by the leach field. But all three of the town's peer reviewers did.
Right. Yeah, the overburdens soil would be.
Yeah, the overburden. And that means that more stormwater is going to be flooding adjacent properties. And that, it seems to me, could be a threat to public health if the abutters' septic systems are flooded. They're not going to function. I mean, the, the effluent from the development leach field is supposed to be pure water. So it's not a question of contamination.
Well, and, and plenty of pharmaceuticals.
Oh, yeah. Well, pharmaceuticals, yeah, there's always that. Unfortunately, we don't have the evidence.
Marion?
Yes.
Hey, this is John Garrison. Thirty-three Hunting Lane. Can I just ask a question about this?
Of course.
I understand that, you know, this is studying stormwater. And the developers, engineers are saying, well, the stormwater won't be increased. However, they are pumping 20,000 gallons a day, maybe more, out of the bedrock further down the road and bringing it up to the top of the hill and releasing it through the leach field, right? That's not stormwater. That's water that's being pumped out of the bedrock.
Exactly right.
And discharging through the leach field at the top of the hill. So that is definitely going to be an increase of discharge. I don't know if it, if you, if you call it stormwater.
Oh, no, that's exactly what this paragraph deals with. I, I understand you didn't get a, get a chance to read through it. But that's exactly the point. The, the estimated discharge of effluent from the proposed leaching field of the wastewater treatment plant is not without jurisdiction. However, its impact on the groundwater level and the corresponding ability of the ground to absorb stormwater.
Marion, would it make sense to just spell that out just a little bit more? However, the impact of, if we know how many, you said 20, you know, how many thousands of gallons are being pumped up? Or how many residences, proposed residences worth of effluent are being discharged at this location?
Actually, one of the peer reviewers did, did calculate that and made exactly the same point. So, but we could make this clearer. I agree. And I think, you know, I, maybe at the end, we should say that stormwater becomes a public health issue when it floods abutters' septic systems. Just to kind of, you know, close that argument.
I don't know if we've gotten any feedback exactly, but it's my understanding. Well, too, I know at the last planning board meeting, we talked a little bit about this and what kind of the normal precedence is for new developments in stormwater. And Gino had said it, it, and as standard practice is developers are responsible for keeping their stormwater on their property. So this concept of tying into the town system, which is a system that's, that's there, it exists, but it's not necessarily, it's, it's not decode, my understanding, it does, it's not up to date. It doesn't, it's not, certainly not equipped to handle an increased capacity.
All right. That's kind of what paragraph three says. And I don't think we know what the capacity is. And, and you know, it's hard to argue. I mean, we just said, say it's critical to determine the potential impacts of such a connection, meaning the connection to the existing system.
Sean has his hand raised.
Oh, Sean, thank you. There you are. Go ahead.
Did you want to stay on two or do you want to, I, I have comments that are kind of for two and three.
Okay, why don't you go ahead for, for two to start?
Well, one, if you were to go to the road in the catch basins outside Mr. Garrison's property, I haven't done it in a few weeks, but I would guess if you shined a flashlight down there, you'd see running water through all those catch basins. That running water is basically the hillside shedding off towards the road. The, the reason they put those in is because the hillside was constantly shedding water onto the road, not just in rainstorms. It, it happens all winter. I'm sure he realizes we, we, we have to go out and treat for ice on that edge of the road all winter long. Because the hill is constantly, you know, the, it's not surface water. It, it's coming out from just below. And those catch basins, while they're certainly a lot older than I am, they're in, in pretty bad shape. They've survived because they're off the edge of the road, but they're not to code. They, they provide no treatment for the, for the stormwater runoff. But they give you a clue of how much groundwater is there. And any increases is definitely going to affect those properties. All the properties drain into them.
So you would say that, say during a storm, the catch basins are at capacity or above capacity even now?
Yeah, they way beyond their own capacity to treat any, any stormwater. And then they, they, they dump directly in the Indian Brook without any treatment at all.
I don't, I bet the states, that, that's our problem.
Well, it's our problem, but it indicates that there is a groundwater issue up there. That relates to two. But for item three, I can't find it. I had our consultant look. And unless legal counsel can find it, I can't see anywhere where the town is absolutely required to allow someone a discharge into our stormwater system without A, upgrading our stormwater system and B, compelling us to do it.
That's, I think that's, that's a good, that.
That is a good one. So number three could be a lot more direct and strong. That is.
I have no idea why we would allow them to do it.
That's right. It's not only critical determine, to determine, do we have any data to show that the impacts would overwhelm the system's capacity?
You see, you'd have to talk about what's delivered to our stormwater system from theirs.
They don't have one.
Yeah. So, so it's very hard to say the plume of water that they're going to, that they propose to put into the territ, to that property. It's kind of hard to say it's, how much of it's going to migrate to, over to Hunting Lane?
No, they have a direct, they want to do a direct connection. That has to be permitted through the DPW.
Yeah, so that.
As a discharge. Why, why would we do that?
Yes. So I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that, that, that connection is a valid point. And that's, needs to be defined in terms of its amount and impact on the existing system.
By them. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the, the way it's written, I think is, maybe I'm reading too much into it, but I think the way it's written says, you know, that need, that must be determined. And I think that's a very fair point.
And, and I have one other point to that is, and, and I think during the hearing, or perhaps their response to the peer reviewer was, well, we're going to send less stormwater down the driveway than we do now. It sheds directly to the road. Well, a residential driveway shedding directly to the road means we didn't enforce our driveway standards when we allowed them to build 31 Hunting Lane. That does not mean that we just allow them to shed water to the road with a subdivision road. I, I don't think there's any way, anyone that would think that that says they can do that. They have to shed off their own water and not bring it to the street. That's just a fact. Whether it's a road, a driveway or anything else. So of course they're going to increase it. It's, they're going to, it's going to be wider and there's going to be more water. They have to treat it on, on their own site. They don't have to, we don't have to allow them to bring it to the town system.
So Sean, I have a question. May I ask, may I just a question to Sean?
Sure.
If, if, if the, if the Public Works denies the connection to the developer, is this just a detail for the developer? Like, what is their recourse? Do they then pay Public Works, can they, can there, is there anything that would compel? If they paid Public Works to upgrade the system, would that be compel, compulsory for the town? Or would they just be able to build their own stormwater routing system in the streets? And, and have to get some sort of a stormwater discharge permit? Like what are their, if they're denied by Public Works, what are their, what are their options? What are their options moving forward?
So that's pretty complicated because, one, the town can't be forced to allow them easement onto the street for their stormwater discharge permit. And then it gets exponentially more complicated because they're discharging into the Charles River watershed. And we're obligated to do phosphorus reduction. So they're going to, they would actually trigger some pretty onerous requirements on themselves if they were to do that. Because they'd have a direct link into the Charles River watershed via Indian Brook if they did their own. I mean, they need to treat their own stormwater. I don't think there's any way they can compel someone else to take their stormwater. The Towns Road Stormwater System, I don't think anyone can force themselves into it. There's illicit discharges all over the place. We can permit those. We certainly can permit, we're going to be more compelled to permit existing ones. But ones from a development, why would we? And they would, I, I think we'd have to force them to upgrade ours. But ours is just handling groundwater that's coming off the hill, which may or may not increase substantially. And of, and of course, the water that's shedding off that edge of the road.
Well, we can assume it's going to increase substantially because they're pumping all that, the, the wastewater, the treated wastewater up and adding that to the groundwater that's now flowing off the road. And that's a lot of water.
Right. And, and I, I know the dirt in the area that's pretty well. And I'm, I, I can assure you it's going to increase. But I, I don't know how we, I'm pretty sure the consultants are going to get there with that, but.
They did propose putting a manhole at a couple of places. Apparently the, I, I have, I'm trying to picture the municipal stormwater handling system, and I can't. I know it somehow goes into some kind of a basin. I don't know where the basin is.
Let me explain it really, really clearly. Picture a brick box, a box made of brick. It's like three foot by three foot with a, a grated lid on top. A pipe comes into it and a pipe goes out of it. And there's water flowing through it. That's it.
Oh, that's it?
And it, yeah. So there's, there's one in front of Mr. Garrison's property. They, they pretty much extend from the top of the hill down. Pipe into a box, out of a box, until you get to Indian Brook at the bottom. And, and if you were to stop and jump out of your car and, and look down, there's a pipe that shoots upstream and turns around and goes under the culvert that goes on to Hunting Lane. That's it. There's not a single deep sump. There's no manhole. I mean, adding a manhole is not going to make that system good. It's old.
Yeah. And it's in series, which.
Right. It was designed to catch the groundwater so that, because the groundwater was obviously leaching out of the edge of the hill and onto the asphalt. And frankly, no one really cared except in the winter. So that's what they did. They, it's just a, it's a huge French drain up the side of the road.
Right.
And it's grabbing a lot of groundwater because there's a lot of groundwater coming off their hill.
So, you know, if, if we have evidence that the system is going to be overwhelmed by adding all this excess groundwater to the hill and coming down into the, into those drains, even if it's held for some transient period of time on some basin on, on their property, it's all going to end up in that drain. So what in that would be a public health, a, a, an evidence-based public health threat? I mean, that's what we're looking for here.
Marion?
I, if you're asking me, I can't create the evidence. I can tell you, I don't think I'm compelled to give them a permit.
Marion, this is John Garrison again.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I don't have Tom Houston's first report. I have some, all the subsequent back and forth between him and the, the applicant's engineer. But in his initial report, he sort of made a avowed statement that dumping the, their stormwater into the catch basin on, on Hunting Lane will cause pollution. It will cause churning of the sediments. And will cause, it was not, may cause pollution or probably will cause pollution. He said it will cause pollution. Now, I don't know whether he's walked that back based on the back and forth. But I could certainly find that reference for you if you want it.
But Marion, isn't it also, I mean, yes, we're looking for this public health concern to give ZBA's any, you know, ammunition. But also, isn't it enough to justify that the plans that have been presented for stormwater management are not satisfactory and don't work? I mean, they haven't done, they haven't provided a plan that is realistic for managing stormwater.
Right, they haven't. But I'm not sure. It's a good question, Eddie May. I'm not sure. Obviously, if stormwater systems are overrun, there could be a public health risk. You can think of different ways it could affect groundwater and well water and other people's septic system. But yeah, I'm not sure what we do with that, honestly. But they are required to adhere to state and federal stormwater standards. And Tom Houston's report that I'm just opening now does spell a lot of those out. What John says is, is correct. I mean, they have problems with it. The ZBA has those comments. I'm just wondering how we can phrase our comments in a way that.
Well, I guess if this was coming before a planning board, which I guess technically it's not. But if it were to come before a planning board, regardless of being a 40B, it would not, this, the, the plan presented does not meet state standards, I, I feel like. I mean, I feel like we should, I know that these things have been said in past meetings. But I think sometimes a lot of information is said at past meetings. But it's still necessary to grab those points and put them down in writing and submit them as, you know, reminder, here's what was said and here's the state of things.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's the best we can do with this letter, Eddie May. I think you're right. And I'm in favor of, you know, it just hammering away at the fact that it doesn't meet state standards wherever we can.
Everything we've said is actually referenced in this letter, the way it's written. But to try to highlight, to say, where, where would you put in that it doesn't meet state standards? It, it's, it doesn't currently meet state standards or the, we say this must be done, this must, this should be done. The impacts need to be understood. We say all that. So are we going to say? or it doesn't meet, or unless it's, unless these things are done, it doesn't meet state standards? That's about all you can add, really.
Uh, right. I think, I think we could strengthen the letter with, with a concluding paragraph pointing out that it does not meet state standards in, in several respects. I mean, we can say, for example, uh, we say here that it's critical to determine the potential impacts on such a connection in terms of the system, that means the municipal system's capacity, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we can strengthen it by saying, as currently proposed, uh, that the stormwater runoff management system does not meet state standards. And, uh, I'd be, the idea that, uh, stormwater from point sources, I'm not sure what point sources means there, must not run onto a budding property without an easement. Uh, that's from one of the abutters, but that's also a state standard, right? Gino, that's not a local standard, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
Perhaps, Marion, if I could suggest it could go in the introduction paragraphs, you know, you know, something like, as, as stated at this moment, this proposal doesn't meet state standards around stormwater, including some of the points in more detail below.
Yeah, I agree with that. And then we could add, you know, and we remind the ZBA that, uh, state stormwater standards cannot be waived. I mean, they already know that, but still.
Marion, or Gino, who's jurisdiction, what, what's the process for meeting for compelling the developer to meet state standards? Is that in, in mass housings court to?
Yeah, I think only if it's appealed to them, but, um, it's, the, the standards are available for local permitting agencies and they're, they're, you know, usually engineering peer reviewers refer to those and go through them. There's like ten, ten standards that they, uh, review the, the proposal against.
So could the ZBA deny that, the comprehensive permit on the basis of it not meeting state standards?
I, I don't know.
You know, I, I think they would have a hard time.
Yeah.
They couldn't deny them, but I guess this is a struggle with this process because, I mean, I guess they could issue a condition that they have to, that they're, they're not waiving.
I think that's the more likely outcome, yeah.
Um, Sue Tyler has her hand raised. I don't know if she.
Sorry, Sue. Uh, sorry, Sue, I, I missed you. Go ahead.
Oh, that's fine. Don't worry about me. Um, I have a question between your comments three and comment four. Comment three regards to DPW and getting the director and, and jurisdiction of DPW. Uh, but then four seems to say for the abutters, they need to do with the easements. Well, isn't the town of Sherbin and their land an easement? That they wanna, I mean, in order for their project to go forward, they have to utilize town infrastructure? And so is that not an easement? I mean, we're dealing with the Cooler Street process and then possibly running water and sewage out of Framingham and Natick down, um, you know, uh, Kendall to Meadowbrook. And they need an easement from the town for that. If this property is looking at using, so I'm, I'm looking at three, we need DPW jurisdiction, you know, their jurisdiction, hence the town. Four says that you need an easement from the abutters. Where, the town isn't a butter to this. So, I'm just.
Yeah, it's a good question. So I, I don't, I don't know. Maybe Sean would have an answer to that if he's still here. Sean, are you still around?
Yeah, they, well, the, I think they're, the, the easement they're referring to is open water.
Yeah, I, uh, Marion, this is John Garrison again. I believe it's, we're talking about two separate things here. One is what Sean's talking about. Uh, a, a hard connection into the catch basin on Hunting Lane. There are also two separate uh, points that they've indicated on their plan where they're, they are directing water onto, uh, two of my neighbors. Uh, and, and the peer reviewer was pointing out they're gonna need easements from the neighbors if they want, if they intend to do that.
Right. So the connection to the town municipal, uh, system would not be called an easement. It would just be a connection to the town system that requires.
It would be a discharge permit, which is part of the bylaws that we adopted last year, which they made the reference that they could, they thought were local. There's nothing local about it. That was adopted from the state, which was adopted from the EPA permit guidelines.
Yeah, because i- i- I can't, a- a- and I know that this, uh, uh, we dealt with a property that was discharging, that their subpumps were going out and discharging into a catch basin on the certain street. That's not allowed. So let's take this project as being a much bigger sub pump discharging out into the municipal infrastructure, which we know is minimal at the least. Uh, Hunting Lane has always had an issue, and so now let's take a private entity and knowingly allow them to pump that much more in, i- into the infrastructure. Yeah, how's that work?
Anyway, exactly. I mean, it would be great if we had some kind of, uh, numbers or some data about the capacity of that municipal system, uh, that justifies your, the necessity of denying access to it.
Marion, again, John Garrison, for what it's worth, I did find the, the little reference. This was in, uh, Tom Houston's March twenty-second letter.
Yeah, I've got that right here.
This is a catch basin to catch basin system.
Right.
Any new connection that adds, this is the quote, "Any new connection that adds substantial flow to such a system will contribute to water pollution." Because the substantial flow will churn and resuspend contaminants in each down gradient catch basin sump and carry the re-suspended contaminants downstream, and that would be Indian Brook and onward, as Sean was saying.
So maybe we should repeat that. I mean, in general, I did see that too, John. Thanks. In general, yeah, I think, um, you know, you all have a copy of this letter. It would be great if people could just put in some suggestions of things that could be inserted. Um, I can see some myself. I'm sure Gino can see some too, just to, I think we've hit the major areas of issues, but we could make it more forceful. Does that sound good to you, Gino?
Yes.
So, uh, uh, you know, uh, John, we could send you a copy of this letter if you like, if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I would be, I mean, I, I don't wanna step on the planning board's letter, but, uh, if you're willing to accept suggestions from me, I'd be happy to, to look at it.
We're always willing to get comments from the public, no problem.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, Sean, uh, same with you. You know, we, we should, uh, work on this a little bit. Sean, you, you got a copy of the letter today, right? Uh, Sean, you still with us?
Yeah, I, I believe I did.
Yeah, and it'd be great if you could just, you know, make some notes on it if you'd like and give it to Addie May, or whatever's easiest for you. Just give us your input. And I'm sure you'll have your own comments, but it wouldn't hurt to have them in this, in this letter as well, since, you know, you are the expert on the municipal system, and I certainly am that.
Right. And, and, I mean, I have some brief comments. I, I don't have time, nor really the resources to reverse engineer what we have. I, I think if we draw on the peer reviewer's comments, that's gonna have to be enough.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I, I did reach out to our consultant for some of the work, but again, they're proposing something that I, frankly, they shouldn't even be proposing. They're shooting themselves in the foot by proposing it. So, i- it only warrants so much of a response, really. The peer reviewer kinda shot it. So we'll reference some of that.
Uh, did the peer reviewer note that they could not tie into the municipal system without?
I don't think they came out and said that. Our stormwater engineer, I think, did. But I haven't had legal counsel review it, so I, I didn't exactly have like a legal finding that it, that we could, that we could skirt it and say, you're just not gonna do it. Uh, it's my hunch that we can say that.
Hey, Sean, uh, again, John Garrison, sorry to keep butting in. In his, whatever this is now, May fourth letter, this is Tom Houston PSC. He's, he's referring to this again, because they keep going back and forth on this same issue. Uh, oh, this is an open item. It's not resolved. A piped connection to the municipal storm drain system requires authorization by the DPW.
Yes.
So he says it, he says it there.
And, and our, and our own, um, recently adopted bylaw is, is what created that and allows me to do that. I don't think they can compel me to give them that discharge permit. I don't think there's anything in, in the forty B law or anything else that compels the town to accept that. The reason those law, those are enacted is so that the town can accept them, because for all I know, Mr. Garrison has a discharge into that stormwater system, and we should allow that because it's probably been there for forty years, and that, we have those all over town, so we wanna permit those where necessary, but that doesn't mean we have to.
Right, but, uh, Sean, just to play devil's advocate here, I, I think you're right. Uh, you may not have to, but from mass housings, housings' point of view, if they're holding out for as much reportable housing as they can possibly get, and they like every forty B they see, um, how much weight would the inability tied to the town system have? I guess they, they still have to comply with state laws, and if they can't tie into the town system, where's that stormwater gonna go? And there are state laws about it not running off the property onto other people's property.
Right. If, if I, I can comment on that. Uh, the, I mean, that was raised at the hearing, and their response was, we're not putting any more into the system than, than what already goes there now. If the connect, direct connection is not permitted, we'll just continue to let it run off the same volume and the same peak onto the street and into those basins, just like now, no change. That's their response to this.
So they, a- again, is that a, that, is that a real response?
Uh, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, that's what the response is.
I know, and the driveway standard says zero. So the fact that the driveway's there and it, and it allows it is one thing, but a newly permitted road still says zero. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna sheet block.
But no, it's not exactly zero. It's no increase. It's no increase. So if they can document that they're already, that already that amount of water is running into there, and it's not gonna increase on, on their, because they're holding it back and infiltrating or whatever else they're doing on their own property, then I think they're, they're in compliance.
No, that's, that's their statement.
No, I know. I'm saying.
If you do a subdivision road, a private road cannot shed water onto a public road. Right? It, it just can't.
Okay.
And those infiltration basins that they have on their property, I mean, that, their, their argument is that the, all the extra from the septic system is gonna just infiltrate right on the property. It's gonna go right back down and then into the bedrock. And of course, uh, there are, they, the peer reviewers also had problems with the way the infiltration basins were, were built, but, uh, still.
Did the peer reviewer quantify how much, whether they felt that there would be an increase in the amount of stormwater over what, and if they're saying zero on, on going down the driveway, did the peer reviewer have a different quantification?
They didn't have a, they did not have a quantification, but as I recall, they did not agree with zero, but.
Um, may I make a comment?
Sure, of course.
Um, well, naturally, if you're putting down a lot more pavement and you're covering earth with structures and rooftops, you're gonna be increasing the stormwater just by the nature of building structure up there. So there has to be an increase. So for them to say there is not gonna be an increase, it's false. Yeah, no, but they're, they're not saying there's not an increase overall. They're saying because they're developing, they're building a stormwater management system on their property, that's handling most of it. But the same amount that's being shed off now will continue to be shed off. Okay. That that's where there's no increase. Not that there's not an overall increase. There's definitely an overall increase.
So they're depending on a lot of that water being infiltrated and not running off by their big infiltration.
Right. And I doubt that they have, uh, what, what Sean, they know what Sean told us tonight, that those catch basins are, are, um, handling groundwater, not stormwater. So, um, that, that there, a lot of their capacity is being taken up by the groundwater as opposed to the stormwater, so um, that casts even more doubt on this, on the system.
Well, maybe that's the direction this letter should take, that the, um, you know, we are, the current system is, is managing groundwater due to the hydrogeological nature of this property and has not been designed to handle stormwater, or.
Yeah, they could argue that, uh, stormwater, how do you differentiate, differentiate stormwater for, from groundwater? The only difference is the, the rate at which it's, uh, coming into the soil. And the rate with stormwater is, um, is intermittent. But anyway, uh, I, I think we can, we can strengthen this letter, but it really would be, it would be great if everybody could just take a look at it and, you know, use track changes and throw in some notes.
So do we have, they meet, they're saying potentially the hearings are closing by the thirtieth, they're meeting on the twenty-seventh. Is there, is ZBA, when, I'm trying to think, and we don't have a meeting before their next ZBA, so we would need to either schedule us, if we did some changes or update to the letter, if we felt that we needed to have it approved by all planning board members, would we need to schedule a special meeting and get it posted? Should we post something for next week just to cover bases, or?
Can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Um, do, is there any reason to not, to, to use it? Is there any reason not to use Google Docs for this? It's something that I use a lot professionally. It allows a lot of people to collaborate, see each other's changes. May help us avoid what Addie May is, is addressing, is having to meet again.
Doesn't meet open meeting law. We can't.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We can't do that. We have to send things to Gino. And, uh, then Gino can, uh, can craft it. I mean, it's already, I think, quite a good letter. It would just be a matter of maybe adding a few extra, you know, points to beat the drum a little more loudly, but other than that, I think, you know, he really has said what needs to be said. But there may be, mean, there may be some, you know, extra, you know, strong phrases that you'd like to try to get in there, but, you know, just send them to Gino.
I, I think we ought to decide now and send this letter. I think sending it at the last moment decreases effectiveness, and we're trying to increase the effectiveness by tweaking it. But I think waiting till the last moment is decreasing it. I think it's a very good, I read it carefully. I think it's a very good letter as stands. Um, and if we wanna add something, I think we had to do it now and.
Just hard to craft language, you know, in a group of more than. Just hard to craft language, you know, in a group of more than two. So you know, one solution that was suggested that maybe the, the best thing is to add a phrase about the fact that we, we do not think this conforms overall. We do not think this conforms to EPA or federal stormwater standards for the reasons below, something like that.
I think that's it. Just write that. That's it. Because I remember about 10 years ago, Holliston lost a 40B, where they denied a, the Holliston ZBA denied a 40B on pretty similar stuff, but they were really saying it didn't meet their local standards. And the developer, all the developer did was say, we'll comply with 21E, we'll comply with the stormwater and something else. And, and that's it. All they had to do was say they would comply.
Yeah.
And, and they, they lost on that basis. So I think saying state and federal stormwater stand, it doesn't meet state and federal stormwater standards as it stands now. That's it. That's all we need to say, because I think it's a great letter and I, I think it says a lot of things. But I think trying to get in that our integrated stormwater system going down hunting is, is draining groundwater gets into a lot. Not going to get that in a, in tweaking this with one or two sentences. Because I think they also just say fix your system.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's what the, what the mass housing would say, fix your system. Like they say, if your roads are inadequate or your schools are inadequate, so fix your schools. Fix your road. Yeah. Is everybody okay? I think that's a good suggestion, John.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we're gonna, I think if we could clarify, I, I think the statement that it doesn't meet the DEP standards or what we've just discussed, um, sorry, I was trying to scroll up and I realized I don't have control. But if we could also just clarify and put a quantity on the upper part with the, the amount of volume, just putting a number in there of some kind rather than just saying the affluent.
We have, take it directly from the peer reviews.
Right.
But I think if we do that, we have to reference the peer review because it's not our data. And we, we can't, you know, we can't stand by it because it's not our data, but we can reference the peer reviewer. And I would say maybe at the end of this first paragraph, we'll add something about the fact that it does not meet state or EPA stormwater standards as written. I mean, I think that is the best we can do at this point. Okay, but what about the issue that, well, they already brought up the fact that you need an easement onto, you need an easement if runoff is going onto other properties. Do you think it's worth a mention that runoff onto adjacent budding properties affect the effectiveness of their septic systems? I mean, it's kind of obvious, but I maybe the state has to be reminded that everybody in Sherburne has septic systems. It's not just clean water running across the yard.
Well, so must not run onto a budding property without an easement with respect to the function of their septic system.
Right. I'm just going to put that add septic. We can add that language later. Uh, Gino, there doesn't seem to be any, I didn't have any ability on my computer to make a proper, proper margin at the bottom of the page and it runs right down to the bottom of the page. So maybe you can do it on yours. I couldn't change your document settings.
Okay.
I think we can approve something tonight and, and approve it with formatting changes done later.
Anyway, that's not, we don't have to say, I guess, thought anyway. Okay, so I, I suggest that, Gino, I'd be happy to help, but I'm sure Gino can add those statements easily. And then we'll just send it out again. If anybody has further comments, send them to Gino.
Can we do it now? I, I really think we ought to do it now and vote on it and then send it because I think if you do that, then we're going to have to have a special meeting just to approve whatever edits are made.
Uh, yeah, that's a good point, John. I'm willing to do that, but so dictate to me.
In the second paragraph, support their findings more specifically. So the, in the second paragraph, so more specifically, we believe the current plan does not meet state and federal standards. We offer the following.
Okay. Is that good?
It's good for me.
And then down here, without an easement to accommodate it.
Such runoff may have impacts on a butter's septic systems.
Is likely to. A little bit stronger. Impacts on a butter's. I would, I would have impacts, maybe we could say, is likely to reduce the to it, to have impacts on the function of a butter's septic systems.
Such runoff may reduce the effectiveness or the function of the butter's septic systems.
Conducting this election fraud fantasy audit of Arizona's presidential election ballots. They call it off once and.
Go unmute.
The damage is done. Mr. Garrido, thank you so much for being here today.
Whoever's watching TV needs to go on mute.
Hey Sue, mute.
And I just want to get something in here about a health hazard.
And, and Marion, you got, you have to make like likely, such runoff is like.
Oh, thank you.
Um, well, if you, if you want to add something for a health hazard, you could easily just add in wells. Let's face it, if there's flooding, it's going to, it could potentially or would affect wells too.
I wouldn't make that even a separate sentence. But runoff would affect wells, how? This is overburden runoff.
It's tricky.
Wells are deep wells.
We're, it's tricky because of that. I, I'd leave wells out just for that reason.
Yeah, it's harder to make that. I wonder if we can say something about, and reduce the effectiveness of a butter's septic systems. And the health of, of.
You're trying too hard.
Okay, okay, shut up. Okay.
I would.
Got it.
I think if they don't understand septic systems, they have something to do with health and.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. Oops, where did that go? Oh, I see. Must have gotten another page break in there somewhere.
Um, I just have a question. Why, why would you be concerned about putting wells in there?
Because we're trying to create a, we're, we're supporting the concept that the overburden is isolated or largely isolated from the.
Yeah, yeah, but you're assuming they're all bedrock wells.
Yeah.
They, they could be driven wells.
Yeah, if they're not sealed, you're right, but.
Of course I'm right.
He's a board of health guy. We've got to remember that. I don't know what's with the format here, Gina, but we haven't lost anything.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. We, we don't care. We're going to approve it without formatting.
Right.
But, but, but there are a lot of driven wells in town. They're not all bedrock wells.
But does a driven well mean it's not sealed?
I believe they're not sealed. Because all, all of the beaver flooding that we dealt with 12 years ago, that was a huge concern with the shallower wells.
But they didn't have, they didn't have solid pipe the first 10 feet?
You know, I, I am not sure. I don't know. But I know there was a concern with flooding with the driven wells.
Yeah. If they, yeah, well.
So I don't know. But if you're looking for a health concern, there's a health concern.
Yep.
I, I wonder whether, um, yeah, I guess if they don't have test pits on those infiltration basins, then they're going to have to do them, right? By state standards. So that's okay, what we said.
Well, I don't know. I'm hesitant, as, as I said, I'm hesitant to have wells in there because we're making this argument about overburden being isolated, so it's shallow and all that stuff. So we could say about our septic systems and shallow, shallow wells or.
Well, then, well, then don't, well, then don't put it in. I'm just making that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think kind of to your point, John, about keeping it simple. I mean, sometimes if we're trying to spread too much, then the points that we're trying to make get diluted. So I think we do have good points here. I just was trying to find a way to strengthen them.
I like it now. I like it the way it is.
Okay. Rather than just say function, what do we mean by effects at the, what are effects here? Um, that, that is function in settling out sediments and, and reducing and, and removing contaminants. And reduction and release of contaminants at the ultimate discharge site. That's what we're really saying, right?
Yeah, that's good. That's better.
You could, you could add and associated contaminants, water quality and other effects. You know, I mean, sediment can damage water quality. Sediment can damage wetlands recharge, ability to recharge.
Right. Um, let's see, in terms of the systems, when we're drinking capacity here, you mean capacity in terms of volume?
Yes, we're talking about stormwater. So, yeah.
In terms of the system, of the, of the system's volume capacity, right?
Yeah.
Function in settling out sediments and associated contaminants.
Could say in water quality effects. If you're trying to focus it towards health, then water quality.
And then that would be water quality effects at the ultimate discharge site.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of environmental effects, but if we're trying to focus on.
Yeah. And.
If the, the discharge of our water system, our stormwater system is an outfall. They discharge into our system. We have an outfall.
Right.
Oh, okay. So at the ultimate outfall, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the outfall of, of the town's system and that, and that is what's going to be degraded.
Right. And I would, again, I wouldn't use the word effect here. I would say water quality.
I'm going to just stop there. Just in water quality.
Yeah.
Well, if it's true, could you say the outfall in, into Indian Brook?
It is true. Yeah.
And, and the, and the associated wetlands or something like that.
I'm not worried about the wetlands. We're, we're trying to talk about recharge, groundwater recharge. For us, groundwater recharge, but it also affects, you know, potential reservoirs elsewhere in the, in the, you know, Charles River watershed.
Right.
About this and effects on water quality at the ultimate outfall into Indian Brook.
To me, that's too specific and.
You mean Indian Brook is too specific or at the ultimate?
I don't know. It's, it's okay to, because I don't know.
Oh, maybe we should say and effects on water quality period. But it's water quality that's being discharged from the system. So at the ultimate outfall period, John?
Yeah.
What are, what are you telling me to do?
And effects on water quality.
Period.
Yeah. It, we, we can elaborate on saying groundwater recharge. Or, or I don't know. We could say on Indian Brook, out, on outfall in Indian Brook and groundwater recharge. And downstream groundwater recharge, something like that.
But once we're in Indian Brook, we're not doing recharge. We're heading right for the Charles River watershed.
Yeah, which is a groundwater recharge.
Yeah, but if you want to, if you want to make the point, you want to, I mean.
Well, if we're, if we're thinking about health effects and the outfall at Indian Brook and the, and water quality or that's just too complicated.
I think you made the point. That's it. Once we outfall it, it's done. You, it's, if it's contaminated, it's contaminated.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
No.
No, who's, who's?
Oh. Oh.
I think we're done.
Okay, yeah, I think that paragraph two is is good as I reread it, really.
I motion to approve the letter as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, John?
Right.
Eddie?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay. Okay, John, that was good. Thanks for making us do that. Now it's done. Save.
I think it'll have good impact getting it sooner.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a procedural question, a quick one. Um, I see we have two chats. I don't know what they are. I haven't read them, but they're not in the minutes. So if people are chatting uh, about it.
So the only, the two chats are just pasted from the Mass Stormwater Guidelines, so I thought it was easier to see than it is. Um, I just, the first chat is from Mass Stormwater Guidelines, the Stormwater Management Standards. It's point one, no new stormwater conveyance, eg outfalls may discharge untreated stormwater directly to or cause erosion in wetlands or waters of the Commonwealth. This was set up. And then I just, the second one is just a link of where that came from.
Oh, that's very relevant.
And I chatted to apologize for being unmuted.
That's okay. All right, should we put this in as a footnote or something?
Well, Eddie may just read them in Reddit, so I think that's great. That's good info.
But I mean, does this belong in the letter?
Oh, I don't think so.
I mean, I think that's I think the letter is fine that we have. Um, I mean, we, if I I guess if you wanted to put a footnote, you could footnote it, you know, just on on that line and then just.
But then you're gonna have to say, okay, what other state standards in addition to those federal standards?
But these are state standards.
Oh. My my point is if you're gonna start footnoting.
Oh. I think just leave it alone, leave the letter as is. I just was saying, um, I guess more for our education about, you know, says new for new development, no new stormwater conveyances, so.
Yeah, my only point was procedural in terms of a planning board or any open meeting. If somebody puts information about something that's being deliberated on chat and it only goes to a few people, then that's not a good open meeting. That's a, that's an open meeting issue and then what gets recorded in the minutes. So
I'm not able to copy that from the chat. So.
Nor do I think you need to. I think Eddie may covered it. But so that my procedural thing is, I think if somebody's putting something in chat, then we ought to be we ought to discuss it or just acknowledge that it's there somehow incorporated into the public meeting and that kind of thing, that's all.
You can disable chat for future meetings if that's, if that's a good option.
Yeah, we might. I mean, sometimes it's useful to have the chat just to say, um, you know, hey, so and so, you know.
Or if I may, you could just take a screenshot of the chat like I just did. So then you know exactly what was said in the chat.
Uh, yeah, could do that.
Then everybody's gonna see it. Um, I I I think uh, if it's meaningful info, useful info, then what Eddie may just did is great. And and if it's, if it's saying so and so's got their hand raised or something like that, that doesn't need to go in them. That's.
No, uh, but that's okay. Eddie may just read it. And so so we've got it.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I I believe, uh, the peer reviewers also reference the same thing. So.
And just as a mostly when I'm doing minutes, if you're editing a document, it's becoming the final. Those kinds of discussions, individual discussions don't get reported individually in the minutes because the document itself is the record. But but your procedural question is a good one, John.
Absolutely. Okay, so I will send that to Gino and all right, we should, we've approved it, so we'll send it to ZBA. Thanks, Gina, for doing all that work. And and hearing us out. Okay, back to the agenda.
Agenda item, does the, does the well running dry on North Main play into this discussion at all?
It does, but it's not a stormwater issue.
Right.
Uh, do you know if that letter was also sent to the ZBA? Because.
It it has been forwarded.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I mean, that it it's it's noted, but it's not a it's not a planning board issue. It's not a stormwater issue. As far as I know, that was cons, their concern uh, was that their their well levels had dropped after construction and occupancy of forty of fifty nine North Main. And they're concerned about what may happen when an even much, much bigger development uh, is made upstream. It's all the same drainage. Okay, I'm looking back at the agenda. Are there any citizen comments other than those already been made? Or issues that we have not discussed tonight that were not on the agenda and not added to the agenda? How about reports on meetings with other boards?
I don't think there's anything urgent and I'm ready to just call a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, it's 10 o'clock. Uh, and are there any planner reports from Gino? Okay, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Hold a second then.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yiggly eye.
Hi.
I, I'm an I. Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.